Good evening. Welcome to the Mayor and Commission's monthly business meeting of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County. Thank you for your attention and for your interest in the proceedings of your local government. If you need an agenda tonight, they're on a table just to the right of the doors out in the hallway. Those of you watching remotely can get an agenda from athensclarkcounty.com. And for those of you who have electronic devices tonight, would you please turn them off or to silent? Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll, please?
Dickerson?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Lane?
Right?
Present.
Bailey?
Present.
Neesmith?
Present.
Bale?
Here.
Harrod?
Here.
Gertz?
Here.
Hamby?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Do you have any written communication?
No.
Okay. We'll now begin our monthly business meeting. There's several opportunities for public input tonight, and I will let you know, I think there are about five of them, I'll let you know as each of those are available and which items we're looking at. Rules of commission allow each speaker three minutes. There's a light on Ms. Bratton's desk that will turn yellow at two and a half minutes, and please have your comments finished so that there won't be any need to interrupt you. And if you will please show respect for the speakers at the podium and refrain from cheering or jeering or any other demonstrations, we appreciate that. This is the point in time that citizens can comment on our consent agenda.
Minutes.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the minutes. Do I have a motion for the minutes of March 1st, 15th, and 22nd?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now go to citizen comment on the consent agenda, which are items one through six. Please state your name and address, and let us know which item you're speaking to.
Tony Eubanks, 785 North Pope Street, speaking to item number one. Glad to see some action being taken using the neighborhood traffic calming measures on Normal Avenue. But with that in mind, Complete Streets Athens would like to reiterate our call for including funding for pedestrian safety in the general fund budget on an annual basis. ACC's reliance on speed loss funding equates pedestrian safety to that of a special project. We believe providing for the safety and well-being of its citizens is, or should be, a primary concern for government and reflected as such in the budgetary process. The conversion of Dougherty Street is a great example of innovative solution to a long festering problem, and we again thank David Clark for thinking outside the box. We look forward to more projects being undertaken without solely relying on the repaving schedule or speed loss funding. We also want to wish David good luck in his new endeavor. Recent polling by Georgia Bikes highlights that over 87% of Athens residents favor policies that encourage the creation of more sidewalks, bike lanes, greenways, and improved access to public transit. This robust support for complete streets holds steady across all demographics. The desire for more livable, more connected communities truly unites us all. Furthermore, home prices in neighborhoods with well-connected bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure are far outpacing the norm in Athens. The market is speaking in volumes. We encourage ACC government to keep these factors in mind as we move forward in implementing our Complete Streets policy. Thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks. Anyone else wish to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Would anyone like to remove something? Mr. Hamby, I think you...
Sure. Number six, please. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of consent agenda.
Do you consider the gentleman's numbers one through five?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bearman.
The first is an ordinance with respect to establishing residential parking permits for Normal Avenue Residential Parking District to include the 200 block of Normal Avenue between its intersection with Pine Needle Road and its intersection with Georgia Avenue and for other purposes. Next is an ordinance to amend the FY 2016 operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding, if awarded, from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's Stop Violence Against Women Act grant program for expenses related to four investigator positions and one administrative secretary position directly supporting efforts to prevent and reduce crimes of violence against women and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. We'll now move to our public hearing and deliberation.
We'll need to vote.
Oh, okay, we'll need to vote again because you hadn't read the ordinance. All in favor of items one through five?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Did we get a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. We'll now move to public comment on our Community Development Block grants for 2017. And this is item number seven.
I'm Kitty Myron, I'm the Executive Director of the YWCO, and I live at 195 Pendleton Drive. And I just came tonight to thank you all, because this will be the third year coming up that we'll hopefully get the CDBG funding. And I just wanted to let you all know what a difference it has made to our program for these last couple of years. We've been able to extend the hours of the program, we've hired more staff, we've served more girls. I've given each of you a packet with a little report and pictures about our Girls Club program from 2015. I hope if you get a chance, you'll take a look at it. For those who don't know, Girls Club is a program for loaded, moderate-income girls that does all the traditional activities of camp, swimming, dancing, arts and crafts, sports and games. But beyond that, we have reading lessons every day, we bring in community leaders, women from the community, to tell about their careers so the girls can have a vision of what career they could have for their future. We do job training, we do community service, we talk about fitness, we help the girls to value education and to have goals set for that, and so much more. But I also want to thank the staff from HCD for the great job they do of sorting through all the agencies in the public service arena, because that's hard, and also for helping us monitor the progress. But this means a lot to us, and I just wanted to let you all know that we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Myron.
Hi, I'm Jackie Sandin. I live at 894 Hill Street. I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I was, but I'm addressing the issue of the Casa de Amistad, which has not been funded for another community block grant. And I just want to talk about the implications. This morning I found out why it was not approved, and, you know, I can't really argue with you about it. But I do want to say that adult ESL literacy is in bad shape if the Casa does not continue their ESL programs, and I'm hoping you'll consider ways to do that. In 2010, House Bill Two was passed, which eliminated undocumented or under-documented adults from taking ESL classes in the state. So adult ESL are closed to people who are not documented, who are not legal residents. So Casa de Amistad helped bring in those students and teach them English. I happen to be teaching adult ESL methods at the university now, and many of my students are teaching in that program. But I called to see, when I had talked to the adult literacy program, which is administered by the technical colleges but not funded by them, they said that, well, we can't serve them, but we will give them the names of all the community agencies that are supporting them. So in Athens, there's not going to be that anymore. So I'm not asking you to revise the procedures, because I understand the procedures that you went through, and they seem logical to me, but is there any way we can talk as a community about how we can serve adult ESL learners? That's it. Thank you for having me. It's been a long time. It's good to see most of you. I know all of you, I think, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandin. Anyone else wish to speak on item number seven, Community Development Block Grant? Okay, now we'll come behind the rail. Would anybody like to open the discussion? Mr. Gertz?
Just want to highlight a couple of points around our annual Community Development Block Grant funding round. As longtime observers of local government action are familiar with, we get these funds on an annual basis, and the funds have been declining somewhat. I think the staff and the Vision Committee together do a judicious job taking that fairly small slice of the pie, which is 15%, that can go toward community services, and providing that on this challenge grant basis for up to three years for funding. We were contacted by many people in the community who were very concerned about the lack of funding for Casa de Amistad, which Ms. Sandin spoke about tonight. I think she makes a good point, which is that, you know, we do have this expanding population in the community of folks who are undocumented or under-documented, and certainly the path there on educationally would lead the best entry point to be adult literacy classes or adult classes that would lead toward a GED program. And as she mentioned, several years ago, the General Assembly modified the terms of those programs statewide such that under-documented persons cannot take advantage of them. And I think if we have concern about the breadth of educational opportunities in our community, it would be a good idea down the road to continue this discussion of how can we ensure that people become as well-educated as possible. This is going to mean that their children benefit, it's going to mean that they benefit in the employment sector, it's going to mean that our economy benefits as well. So I think her points are well-made, and certainly, for me, they're well-taken. I know there are some commission-defined options regarding CDBG as well. I'm going to let Commissioner Dickerson or others speak about those, and I do want to support those.
Who else was next?
Yeah, sure. Well, first off, I want to say I absolutely think what Casa de Amistad does is great. I think they do a lot, they do a lot for the community and for the Latino community specifically that I think we need to find a way to support. And I've done a lot of work with nonprofits. We've had to find creative ways to raise money, because there aren't, you know, grant funds available for a lot of these organizations. And I'm doing a little bit of research, hopefully going to try to help them find maybe some funds that will help them maybe do some community projects. So I'm going to try to reach out to them that way as well. But given what we were provided by staff, and after having talked to a few people, some of the commissioners about it and some citizens, I've got a commission-defined option to move some of the money around that we can, that's not capped, to try to address more of our housing needs in the community. As you guys know, and I said, I don't want to go through the whole thing, because I sent an email to everybody to sort of explain it, but I will try to explain briefly for those who are in the audience or watching. Commissioner Bell and I were appointed by the mayor to sit on the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. It's a grant, three-year grant program. And we've had, we've had several meetings, we've had a retreat recently, and out of that retreat, we set some goals. And the number-one goal was to increase the quality and quantity of affordable and workforce housing in Athens-Clark County. We've had several other initiatives prior to this one, attempted to reach that. We've had some issues. We're trying to muddle, you know, trying to work through what didn't work with those initiatives to try to find something that will work for us. But ultimately, these CDBG funds are really the only funds we have for housing. And so it's my recommendation that we try to make sure that as much money as we can goes to that. So what I've, what I've done in the CDO is I've redirected some funds that were under specific public facility improvement objectives or projects, specifically $123,492 from item 21, which was for Bishop Park pedestrian accessibility improvements. I left $12,500 in there to remove, for one of the projects that was under that task, and that was to remove some existing interior fencing within the park that will allow for better movement among the different activities and features of the park, which makes a lot of sense. And so we've left that in there. But we've redirected that $123,492 to three of our housing partners, also members of the GIC team, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Team, Athens Housing Authority, Athens Land Trust, and Athens Habitat for Humanity, who were all approved and recommended for funding by our staff and our Vision Committee. And that's really all I have. I don't know if Commissioner Link, also co-author this, if she has something she'd like to say.
Ms. Link?
I just want to add, well, first of all, I want to note the concerns of Casa de Amistad and the need for adult literacy within our Spanish-speaking community. And I think this just further highlights some of the shortcomings of our state legislature in targeting this population and the needs that we have in our community and across the state in serving this population for the greater good of the entire community. So I hope that we can get creative and reach out to this community and do what we can do to serve folks and see that they are properly educated so they can, can fit into our community and, you know, be functional, working folks, and their services are certainly needed. So I hope that we can get creative about that. As far as the commission-defined option goes, that we did, Commissioner Dickerson and I talked about this, and we did decide to remove some funding from the project proposed by Leisure Services for accessibility improvements in Bishop Park. Bishop Park came forward with a master plan several months ago, and this commission chose not to move it forward. There, you know, there were several issues we had with it. And so I personally felt like it wasn't appropriate to move forward with this kind of investment in a facility that had yet to have a proper plan put in place. But it definitely needed some access. So, you know, we left that funding in place to remove some fencing. That is one of the major issues with Bishop Park is the accessibility, especially from that Hawthorne Avenue side, and we are going to be seeing a greater population trying to access from that side. And funding that money toward housing is certainly appropriate. We definitely have a workforce and affordable housing crisis in this community, and our housing partners do great, great work, and they can certainly use every penny, and it always goes to good causes. So I'm fully supportive of that, that commission-defined option.
Ms. Link? Ms. Rock, do you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, she does. I appreciate the work that was done on the commission-defined option for the grant funding, and I did want to make sure it was clear to the audience that the moving around of funds that are in this commission-defined options are not this kind, not the funds that could also be moved toward Casa de Amistad. So it's sort of apples and oranges, so to speak, with the funding. So the, I wanted to make sure that was clear. And then I agree with the need for the Bishop Park master plan to be approved by the Mayor Commission before we put large chunks of money to different parts of that that we saw and didn't approve. And the fence in itself, on the corner, that gate that is toward Hawthorne, I see a lot of times where it looks like it's locked, or there's enough debris that if you open the gate, you get leaf and limbs on you. So I think there's a way that we can maintain it as a more open access to the park without the large amount of funding from this funding source, because they do get SPOS money. So that was one of my main reasons for supporting the moving around of this fund, as well as the advocacy for the housing priorities, affordable housing priorities.
Ms. Dickerson?
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CDO as it's been presented.
Second. App motion second. Mr. Bailey, you want to...
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to address this, please. I agree that there's a need for more services for all our citizens in need, including the Latino community. And I've worked with some of the nonprofit organizations that, that work with Latino community, Hispanic community, and I can see that need. But since this commission-defined option is predicated on diminishing funds from Bishop Park and from the proposed increase in pedestrian accessibility for the park, and since I'm the commissioner that represents that area, I cannot in good conscience support taking money away from Bishop Park. So I'd just like to state that I do see the need to support services for the community, for Hispanic community, but I don't like it being taken away from, from projects in my district. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak before the vote? Do a roll, call Ms. Bratton.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bale?
Yes.
Take yes, one no.
Okay, good. Motion passes. This is the time we would have citizen input for our old and new business, which...
Wait, we missed the fire station item. We took that off the consent.
Well, I haven't missed it, I'll bring it back.
Okay, okay. All right.
So this, this is the time that anyone who would like to speak to the old and new business, which are items seven through 10, come to the podium and...
Six, eight, nine, ten.
Well, well, six would have been, well, yeah, we'll add six back to it since, but it was taken off after public comment, so there was an opportunity. But if someone wants to speak to item six, we'll respect that. So items six through 10, anyone who wishes to speak to one of those items, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and we'll start with item six. And Mr. Hamby, I think you wanted to speak to that.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. And it seems like this is an appropriate topic, since it does seem like on, on voting days in particular, we're always trying to put out fires before the meeting. So certainly, certainly, sometimes we succeed, sometimes we don't, which is why we're building a new fire station. So I do have some questions for Manager Williams, if that's appropriate, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
And the first question I have is about response time. Response time, certainly this discussion here tonight looks at purchasing a piece of property over off Cleveland Road on Ben Burton Circle, to be more specific, that certainly moves it away from its current location, which is at 3500 Atlanta Highway. I know that address. And then it, of course, where it is now, services quite a deal of Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy. And if Commissioner Neesmith will indulge me, I'd like to ask the question about how this new location would impact the response time for the Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy Road homes out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamby. And the way that, you know, the ISO rating is what we're kind of focused on, that's a standard that we're held to, and it governs the insurance premiums that homeowners pay. And the standard that they promote is if you're within five road miles of a fire station. If you are not within five road miles of a fire station, then the ISO rating is 10, and that's the worst you can have. If you are within five road miles, you know, and if you are within five road miles and a hydrant's there and all sorts of other things, then you can have lower ratings. And I'm proud to tell you that the Athens-Clark County rating is a two, which is about as good as you can get. A one is very rare. And that's, I think that's, says a lot about our fire department, but also our public utility system as well. Now, this, the movement of this, several sites were looked, you know, we buffered the area that we're trying to serve to be within five road miles, and the site that y'all are considering tonight is 1.7 miles west of the 3500 Atlanta Highway site. And we have some overlap in the Mitchell Bridge Road and the Timothy Road area from Stations Three, which is Five Points, and Stations Four, which is Oglethorpe Avenue, the one on Oglethorpe Avenue. And in moving the, further west, we're going to capture about 100 properties that currently are not within five road miles of a, of a fire station, so we will improve service coverage there. And the folks at, at Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy Road will remain under five road miles. They will keep what they've got because of the overlap from Station Four and Three.
Okay, now, so, so some of, it sounds like what I'm hearing is some of Mitchell Bridge Road would then be serviced by Oglethorpe Station, and some would be serviced by the Five Points Fire Station.
That's correct.
Now, certainly, a concern that I've heard today is that, you know, Five Points traffic is a little bit different than Timothy Road and Atlanta Highway traffic. So is it going to take longer to get from Five Points to, to Timothy Road to, if somebody needs some help?
Well, to my knowledge, we've not had issues with, with response in, in and around the Five Point service area, and...
So there have been some calls from Timothy Road that Five Points has serviced before...
Well, I'm not sure about that, but I'm saying if, and what if I, in my mind's eye, you're thinking about sort of traffic really backed up in and around Five Points, impeding the, you know, the fire trucks to respond, and that's not been an issue up to this point.
Okay, okay.
The... The distance from Five Points Fire Station to the existing Fire Station Number Two is, is just under eight miles, so...
So at what point, I guess when the new fire station gets built, is it the point then that will, that will sort of change the first responder, I guess? If somebody from Timothy Road calls, I imagine they have a designated firehouse to respond to them, and Mitchell Bridge does as well. So is there some way where we can notify the residents along Timothy Road about that change at, at the point of time when the new fire station is built? I know that may be a year or so down the road. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make sure people are aware of who's servicing them and, and what that means. But also, so answer, if you could, answer that question, but also answer, if you could, the ISO rating of Timothy or Mitchell Bridge Road will not be impacted one bit from this, correct?
That's correct. They will still meet the ISO standard, and we will do whatever the Mayor Commission wants, but, but to the citizen, it's going to be an Athens-Clark County fire truck rolling up on them.
They don't know which station it comes from.
I mean, there'll be a number on the door.
They just want it there quickly.
That's right.
And that's, that's the thing. I think that's what I'm hearing from residents, and Jerry may be hearing the same from Mitchell Bridge Road, is we just want assurances that the folks that we represent will get that service quickly, as they're accustomed to, and that will not change.
And this, and this calculation has been done some time ago, and it's looked at very closely to make sure that nobody is being deprived further service. And, you know, the point is, is to extend service to folks that don't have it right now, without sacrificing existing service.
Okay. Now, thank you. I'm going to change the topic just a little bit here, because this has come up certainly along the Atlanta Highway corridor, and I'm sure Commissioner Neesmith has heard it as well.
You mean the Athens West Business Corridor?
Athens West Business Corridor, excuse me. But certainly, certainly we have this, what's called a mutual aid agreement with, with Oconee County. And, and I have several, many people that I represent that wonder about that. And they, you know, they certainly wonder what that's, what that's about, and I can wonder with them, actually. But in, in an effort not to sound like Donald Trump or Bernie Sanders, I don't know which one I'd be sounding like, I guess Donald more than Bernie, is, is Oconee getting a free ride off our fire service?
No, sir, I don't believe so. And a mutual aid, a fire mutual aid agreement is, is common for most municipalities and counties with their neighbors. And that says, if we need help, you'll come help us. And that's true of all of our surrounding counties and fire departments that we have that. That doesn't necessarily benefit Oconee County with an ISO rating, or with a better ISO rating or us as well. It's just, if we need your help, we will come. And over the last five years, we have helped, we've responded to a call from Oconee County 10 times. And these are not areas that are associated with the Epps Bridge development. And, and response, they have helped us four times, and probably most notably, when we had the big water break last year, they have a water truck that we don't have. It's an expensive piece of equipment, and they stationed it on the west side of the county to help with fire response if a fire broke out, because we didn't have water pressure, as y'all well remember. In our, we have a mutual aid agreement, and we also have an automatic aid agreement. And the automatic aid agreement calls out certain local, local localities in both Oconee County and Athens-Clark County, and this includes those 100 properties that aren't served right now by our fire station, but will be in the future, that if they are, their fire station is closer to those properties than ours is. So they respond there. In return, the agreement is that we respond to Caterpillar, as well as the entire city limits of Bogart, which, some of that is in Oconee County. Now...
Just let me make sure I'm clear on this. The 100 properties, properties you're talking about are in Athens-Clark County...
They are in Athens-Clark County.
...that Oconee County's servicing.
And, and let me qualify that, too. That doesn't mean that we're hands-off. It only means that they can get there quicker and start to stabilize the situation. So in both cases, each county only sends one unit to the agreed-upon localities, and only for a structure fire. Okay? And it's only meant to be there and stabilize until the other forces show up. Now, what this does is, in theory, it gives the Athens-Clark, if that mutual aid agreement exists, ISO recognizes that they are within five miles of a fire station, even though it's not ours, and they extend to them the same fire rating, or rating that Athens-Clark County has. With the properties in Bogart, they actually have a fire station close enough, and I think they're rated at a split rating of five and seven. Now, I know that doesn't make sense to a lot of folks, but they, they don't get any better ISO rating than they have right now from our participation in that. So when you look at it that way, I don't believe that they are getting any better benefit than we are receiving from them. But, you know...
Let me, yeah, I'm just about, I've got just a couple of more. I'm assuming I answered this correctly by saying we would, we're going to service Athens first. And I know that's the case, but the question is this. So if we get called out to a fire in Oconee County, whether it's on Epps Bridge Development or wherever, and our, and it's, you know, our fire department's out there, and this is a hypothetical question, but, you know, Fire Protection Service is based on knowing that you have that protection ready and available when you need it. So there's a fire out there, we go out there to assist, and then Jerry calls that his house is on fire. Do we, are we going to leave that situation, then come help the citizens that, that pay for the service? And it may be something you can't answer, I don't know.
Well, I would like the opportunity to clarify that with, because I'm not intimately involved, knowledgeable of what those fire procedures are. Now, what my intuition tells me is that when you're on scene, that you don't leave that scene until somebody is there to take over for you. But I would say that anytime that our units respond, all the other surrounding closer fire stations are put on alert, that, you know, you may be called, so be ready. Because they know that if something else happens at an immediate area, we need to be there to respond.
Okay, okay. Well, good. I think that, I think that helps answer some of the questions and concerns that I've been hearing. I would say this, though, that certainly, certainly it might be worthwhile down the road to sort of have some sort of work session or something on this, on the mutual aid agreement, so that we can understand it a little bit better, and how it impacts our fire service and the budget implications of it, which may not be any, or just a little bit. But I just think it might be worthwhile as a, as a learning experience so that we can perhaps better explain what it's about, or offer some suggestions about it, as well as ways to tweak it maybe, perhaps. But at any rate, I think there's been enough level of concern about that, that it may warrant that at some point in time.
Well, I believe you'll have the opportunity, because the fire department has been working on some cleanup to the various mutual aid agreements, which have to be approved by the Mayor Commission, so there will be some discussion forthcoming on that.
You've used up your whole talk time for the whole night.
Oh, that's fine by me.
No, I thought it was very important to get all those thoughts out in one, one stream, rather than interrupting you.
And I will say this, I mean, and I know each of us behind this rail. I mean, one of the main jobs, and the mayor does too, one of the main jobs we do is to make sure that the citizens we represent feel safe. And, you know, certainly I've had some phone calls today about this, and I've, you know, I've hopefully addressed some of those concerns. But, you know, I just want us to make clear that we are going to make sure that the people we represent are safe, and that we will help them when they need it, so.
You have, and I was kidding with you. But before we go to anybody else, there's something I wanted to make sure was clear, because you mentioned, and it was said to me in some emails that I read, something about Oconee County getting a free ride. And as I understand it, Mr. Williams, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you live in Oconee County, you have Oconee County's fire rating, whether or not you are within five miles of our fire stations. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So nobody in Oconee County is getting a free ride as far as their insurance rates based on Clark County Fire Department? So I want to make, make sure that everybody understood that. Mr. Neesmith?
We kind of got off subject here, and I'll bring this back around. But first, I'm going to tell you a little story that happened in my neighborhood before I was elected. Lightning struck Cleveland Road Baptist Church and a residence on Deer Hollow, Deer Hollow Road. At the same time, our fire department responded to Cleveland Road. It was a major fire. Oconee County responded to the, to the home fire. It took them 30 minutes to get there. When they got there, they did not have the equipment to fight the fire. They sent two firemen, so therefore no one could enter the residence. We stood there and watched the house burn down, burn to the ground. So there is a problem. Number two, I believe Oconee County's fire department budget is around half a million dollars. Ours is 12 and a half million dollars. I think there is a free ride going on. Because they, their population is, what, a fifth of ours? A third of ours? A fourth, a fourth of ours? And, but they're, but they're paying a sixth, or a 24th, a 24th of the expenses of a fire department, based on, based on the population. So we do need to revisit that, for sure. Now, back to the fire station that we're talking about putting on Cleveland Road. It doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't be serving most of Rich, or all of Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy Road from that location, because it's, like you said, it's only 1.7 miles from, which seems long, from the existing fire station. But it seems to me like our Fire Protection Services, and we'll, we'll look at this, I know we will. It would be better, I want to look at that, to be sure that we're doing the right thing. Number two, we know that the access from Cleveland Road to Atlanta Highway is very easy. We also know that the access to the neighbors to the west, which are now going to get a better fire rating off of Cleveland Road, is very, very easy. So that, that's a definite improvement. And then the last thing is, we also know, or believe, that GDOT may be taking that fire station property away from us someday. So it's better to do something now than it is to wait till later. So I'll be in support of this motion. And of course, we also know that a lot of due diligence was done by the search committee that was looking for a proper location for the fire department. Many, many locations were considered. There weren't that many that were appropriate in terms of location, or size, or accessibility to the highway. And this was by far the best location, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this, Ms. Ryan? I mean, Ms. Link?
I don't really have a problem with the location of the station, and I feel like it's actually going to better serve the overall community. I don't fear that anybody's going to get less served, and we're definitely going to bring some more properties, a lot more properties into proper service. My questions have more to do with the price of this property. We're paying 220, or this, this property has been assessed at $224,000, yet we're paying $450,000 for it. I have real concerns about, you know, Oconee County might be getting a free ride, but I kind of feel like we might be getting swindled on the purchase price of this property. That puts it about $30,000 an acre. There was a property just around the corner that was sold just last year by the same owner that came in at about $28,000 an acre. I'm just real concerned about the overall, or the assessed value is $30,000 an acre, and the property around the corner sold for $28,000 an acre. And we're paying quite a bit more than that, I believe. So I think we're paying about twice that. Do you have any, any response to that?
Yes, I would direct you to history item number 13.
Page 40.
And that's page 40. And in December, in executive session, the Mayor Commission authorized staff to enter into negotiations with the property owner for a not-to-exceed price of $65,000 an acre. Now, what I tell you is, looking at the purchase price alone doesn't give you all the information you need to make this decision. The fact is, is that the site development cost on some of the other sites adds more that sort of evens it up. And staff felt like, while it was in excess of the appraised value, there is a savings there in site development costs to go with this site, because the grade is not quite as steep.
Okay. I just also want to point out an item in Facts and Issues, number eight. Another contributing factor to the project budget will be the determination whether or not to co-locate the Cooperative Extension Service Center on the property. It says that the design of this fire station cannot proceed until a decision is reached on whether or not to co-locate the Cooperative Extension Service Center on that property. So to me, this sounds like, by approving this purchase of this property and going, moving forward with locating the fire station at this location, we are kind of compelled to locate the Cooperative Extension Service Center there, which I am thoroughly opposed to. And I know there are a lot of citizens in the community that are thoroughly opposed to. There's a long list of reasons why it's a perfectly appropriate place to locate this particular fire station, but it's a very, very inappropriate place for our Cooperative Extension Service. So I would, I would just like a clarification of that, number eight. What does it mean by moving forward? And when will we make the decision on the Cooperative Extension? And is this compelling us to put the Extension Service Center there?
No, Commissioner Link, it does not preempt your decision, collective decision, to locate the Cooperative Extension elsewhere. This is just a matter of information that, you know, with the monies that were allocated to this, you know, and with the, with the project, the property acquisition, there's about a $400,000 deficit in the project budget, if it locates there by itself. And that can be mitigated. The point of this is, that can be mitigated. If you choose to co-locate Cooperative Extension on the same site, then you halve the cost of the property between the two, and that, that starts to shore up the budget for the fire station and do everything that they want. And correspondingly for the Cooperative Extension, because there's also anticipated, if there is significant property acquisition cost, a budget shortfall there as well. Now, I will say this, that the monies for construction are in a future tier for the fire station. So there's not a huge rush right now to make that decision. The point is, though, we do have monies for design, and we can go ahead and start with that. But it doesn't make sense to start design, because there were going to be some shared parking and things of that nature, probably shared stormwater as well. So we don't want to start design and start burning feasts before y'all make that decision. Now, where that stands, I'm sorry to go on, but I think Commissioner Sims can say, you know, there have been sites recommended for Cooperative Extension. Y'all have voted on those, and I think staff's done a cost analysis and presented that. You know, maybe we need to bring that back around again for your consideration and continue that conversation. I know there were, there's a lot of interest in different sites. But to answer your question, this does not preempt you from co-locating it, I mean, locating Cooperative Extension somewhere else. Now, I do want to point this out. The project budget for Fire Station included the sale of the current Fire Station, okay? And that was anticipated or appraised at close to $800,000. Now, as Commissioner Neesmith pointed out, Athens-Clark County asked Georgia Department of Transportation to square up that intersection. You know, it's a really tough intersection, and that's going to require the acquisition of the Fire Station property, as well as the Golden Pantry across the street. And so we have asked for that. They're going to spend state funds to do that. I think there's an expectation there that we're not going to try to get top dollar for that property, that we're going to work with Georgia DOT. I don't know what that cost is. But invariably, there's going to be an additional shortfall in the Fire Station budget, because probably less than $800,000 from DOT.
Mr. Neesmith?
Wrong, Mr. Manager, but another economical consideration about the Fire Station and the Extension Center, as far as timing is concerned, is that if we decide to build them both there, then it will save us a lot of money to do the construction concurrently, because of the cost of grading and so forth. Whereas if we do them one and then the other, the costs are very considerably higher than doing them both at the same time. I believe that's another consideration here.
According to- I want to make sure that somebody hadn't spoken.
Let her finish up.
And then you'll, okay.
I just want to make sure that the process for determining the site for the Cooperative Extension Service is going to undergo the public input process that apparently was had for this Fire Station location. According to the agenda report, there were two opportunities for public input and open drop-in sessions. And I want to make sure that those sessions are going to be held for the Cooperative Extension, and that the proper communities will be reached out to, to participate in those sessions. They already happened?
Excuse me, guys, we don't need to talk across-
Have those already happened? Because I was completely unaware of them.
Ms. Link, if you'll let Mr. Sims speak, he will address this.
As Chairman of the Site Selection Committee, those ran concurrently when we had the Fire Station. We had, we had both sets of plans set up at the same time we were at the Dodger Street Building. So they, we did have those talks. We are currently working, even though they've told us no on Milletage Avenue to look at the site, we have a new dean that's coming in, and they have been brought up to stuff. Ms. Bell is working behind the scenes here to see if we can still sway them, if that's possible to, but she's even heard from the chancellor on this particular issue. So this is, it's not quite dead over on Milletage Avenue yet. But, you know, as soon as we really find out that that's a dead horse, then we will move forward with the Cooperative Extension piece of the property. Now, quickly on the Fire Station, it's when we cite, when we cite those, all of those are cited based on an overlap, as Mr. Williams has said. They overlap. Each, any Fire Station in Clark County has an overlapping coverage by a second Fire Station. No Fire Station sits out there by itself, but there's actually enough overlap that it's covered by at least one or two Fire Stations. So like, this, this one moving out to where it is does not prevent it from having that same overlap. And again, it basically just increased the coverage for, a little further out, close to the county line. But we weren't planning on going over the county line unless we do the mutual agreement situation. That's not what we look at when we make these decisions. Our decisions are based strictly on what happens for Clark County. Because we don't want to be, at any point, covered by a volunteer Fire Station. I mean, that's what, what's next door. You know, they get there to save the chimney. As Mr. Neesmith said, the whole house burned down. So we, you know, we have, you know, a professional staff, and we had a lot of input from the fire department itself in this process as well. And this was, when we looked at the sites, this was one of their, this was one of their preferred sites as well. So it, you know, we are looking at it from the standpoint of making sure that Athens-Clark County citizens are covered, first and foremost. You know, I think, we may be talking about free rides, but right now, the ride is what it is for Athens-Clark County. This is what it costs us to do the business of making sure our public is safe. And that's, you know, $12 million, that's cheap when you think about the billions of dollars that we are talking about protecting.
And that's our responsibility. And I'll tell you, I'm really glad to know the Fire Stations are where they are in the fire department's train, the way it is, if my house ever catches on fire. Mr. Neesmith?
For approval, Fire Station location.
Have a motion for approval?
Set.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, which is, yeah, number eight. Thank you. Mr. Bearman, you have some ordinances for us, please.
Yes, I do. First is an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax 2011 program budget so as to provide additional funding for the special purpose local option sales tax 2000, project number 29, Southeast Clark County Community Park, and for other purposes. The next one is an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax 2011 program budget so as to provide additional funding for the special purpose local option sales tax 2011, project number 16, park facility improvements, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Anybody want to open? Ms. Dickerson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, most of you guys know that the process to address the redevelopment of the Wild Playground began last year. There've been a number of citizen meetings, online surveys, to receive some input. I want to first say that I greatly appreciate staff's efforts to listen to the citizens. That's a huge part. That's the largest playground we have in our system. And it is essentially a destination playground. People actually look online and come to this playground from other communities. So it's really neat, and it's a, it's a, certainly a feature, one of the only features I have in my district for that matter. So I'm really glad that we have that, and I'm glad that citizens have voiced their concerns and that our staff has listened to them. There were a few things that were changed, and I'll just highlight that the citizens were concerned there wasn't enough shaded seating. And so the staff has added some additional shaded seating, as well as completing the walking trail that would, will go around the playground, which I think is a huge deal for a lot of parents who bring their children out there. So I wanted to thank staff for that. Initially, when we, when we looked at redeveloping the site and meeting with the citizens, the idea was to try to salvage some of the, of the historical elements that were first put there in 2004 when the, when the playground was built. But as time has gone on, it, I've gotten some input, and I've had some thoughts about maybe trying to preserve it in place. And so what my commission-defined option does is essentially preserves the original site of the 2004 World of Wonder Playground, creating a world- site of the 2004 World of Wonder Playground, creating a World of Wonder Plaza. And basically, if you can, if you've been out of that site, you know that basically what we're talking about is everything will be removed with the exception of two swing sets, which are on the western side, close to the walkway that leads to the dog park. Those will be shored up with enough underground or under whatever, layment material to make those safe for people to use. And then, to the eastern side of that is the plaza where the pavers, the stamped pavers and gray pavers are. There's a wall with some tiles on both sides that have kids' handprints on them, there's a picnic bench, there's also a large picnic structure with a shade sail on it, which was never going to be moved anyway, but there's already sort of a need for, I mean, there's already, there's already people that are going to be coming to that area, so it's not like it's going to be sitting out in the middle of the field. There's already some activity in that area, as well as the dragon that's currently there. And I do want to point out that in the CDO, I did note on here that we need to understand that there are maintenance issues with that dragon, and that over time, I mean, the intention was to remove it, but I think staff has agreed that they will try to maintain it until it gets to a point where we just have to say, "Look, it's just not worth keeping it up anymore," and that will have to go. But for right now, we're going to try to maintain it until that point. The one thing that will move for sure is the Bulldog statue, and, you know, that's a big deal in Athens, too, people look for those as well. So, that will move to the new park, and I've also asked that we try to work with and that the Cultural Affairs Commission attempt to use some of the existing artwork, there's some murals, some of them are in good shape and some are not, the ones that are, maybe try to see if there's a way to incorporate that at the new site. It's not a deal breaker, but it would be nice to try to figure out a way to do that, so just encouraging them to do that. And as it stands right now, the time capsule's actually not marked. I believe staff was going to try to identify the specific location, we sort of know the general location, and that we'll place a plaque identifying when it was placed there, when it's supposed to be dug up, and, you know, that. So, with that, I am asking for approval of my commission-defined option. Commissioner Harris is not here because he was sick, but he is also co-author of this.
So, that's motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Ms. Ryan.
I just want to make sure that some of these modifications, that's still fitting in the budget for the new part and that sort of thing, okay? No, there's not a public art element?
There is a public art element, but-
Because I'm thinking that some of the signage, like the public art, if sort of a concept for that could be, and part of that budget be used for marking where that time capsule is, you know what I mean? That could make, if they could incorporate that, then that, not being just a plaque, it could have the public art element to it as well as it's being labeled. But anyway, we could maybe use some of those resources for some of that, or direct the Art Council to see if that might be a topic for some of the public. I think that would be, help that.
Just for y'all's information, not only did the Art Commission, you know, approve this as a place for the 1%, but they also added an additional $30,000 from their capital funds towards that purpose, so I think they have a vision of something really neat there.
Okay, y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now move on to item number nine. Mr. Bearman, we have an ordinance, please.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to drug and alcohol testing and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion, discussion?
Madam, may I move for option number one?
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam, may I move for suspension of rules?
Thank you, all in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of suspension of rules?
Aye.
Okay, so, we have a renewable energy resolution, and I don't like to read things this long, but I think it's important for this to be read because everybody's not going to have access to a written copy of it easily. So, this resolution is, "Whereas unified government of Athens Clark County strives to be a leader in environmental stewardship while fostering a positive climate for economic development and a vibrant community for personal growth, and whereas displacement in the use of fossil fuels in the region with renewable fuels will improve the air quality and help Athens Clark County remain in compliance with the ambient air quality standards set by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And whereas water is increasingly valuable resource in Georgia and producing 1 kilowatt-hour of energy by renewable systems can require approximately 1/17th as much water as producing 1 kilowatt-hour from coal-fired, from a coal-fired plant." Make sure that that's understandable, that it takes 1/17th as, less, it takes 1/17th of the amount of water for the renewable energy as it does for the coal energy, because that's a confusing statement, but it's an important one. Whereas Georgia generates approximately 88% of its power using non-renewable sources, thereby sending more than $30 billion out of state to purchase these fuels. And whereas other large-scale renewable energy technologies such as food waste, digesters, and combined heat and power plants are used successfully across the country. And whereas in 2014, unified government of Athens Clark County spent 4.4 million for electricity and natural gas. And whereas the unified government of Athens Clark County has demonstrated the viability of renewable energy sources such as landfill gas, solar thermal, solar photovoltaic, I was afraid I'd say that wrong, geothermal conditioning, thus being able to produce an average of 8,000, 8,400,000 kilowatt-hours per year. And whereas the citizens of Athens Clark County have approved the PLOS 2011 referendum, which includes money to support energy efficiency and renewable energy deployment. And whereas on November 3rd, 2015, Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission approved the update to the Public Utilities Service Delivery Plan, which calls for a large solar installation to support the Cedar Creek Water Reclamation Facility. And whereas unified government of Athens Clark County can use tools such as power purchase agreements, government-backed low-interest funding, community-supported installations, revolving funds, and renewable energy credits, credit offsets to deploy renewable energy sources in an economically sound manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Commission of Athens Clark County, Georgia, that the unified government of Athens Clark County will continue to use environmentally and economically sound practices to increase the percentage of our municipal energy needs which is generated from renewable sources, and that the unified government will foster an environment that encourages the use of renewable energy by others in the community, and that the Mayor and Commission hereby direct the manager to support this resolution. So, do I have any discussion or motion?
I do have some discussion, Madam Mayor.
We have an opportunity that we've been ignoring, even though our, some of our citizens have been screaming in our ears about it. And I hope this will lead us to at least examine whether or not we can use our biosolids to generate electricity, perhaps for use in water reclamation. I've been doing a good bit of research out there about biosolids, and even though our biosolids are relatively clean because of the lack of industry upstream from us, the fact is that pharmaceutical contents of those biosolids are probably the same as they are in any significant metropolitan area. And those pharmaceuticals are being spread on our land by spreading this compost. They're also being spread around the landfill and causing air pollution. This is a fact. The fact is also that the biosolids is an industry, and we're probably under the same pressures that everyone else is to support that industry. And that industry has had to admit recently that biosolids cannot be called organic, they are not organic. In fact, if you spread biosolids on farmland, you cannot claim to be an organic farm. So, I hope that we can take this great opportunity to look at the feasibility, the economic feasibility, the technical feasibility of us having a biosolid energy plant to support some of our waste treatment facilities rather than us using these biosolids to spread across our land.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Neesmith's concerns about the biosolids. Not only, I feel, are we missing out on an opportunity to utilize these as energy, but we are actually expending fossil fuels and shipping them across the county to inject into our landfill. So, I believe that if we're to follow through with the intentions of this resolution, that is a path we need to look down sooner rather than later. I also want to point out that this is just a resolution, it's only lip service, and I hope that we will follow through with the proper ordinances and projects and programming. You know, five and a half years ago, an ordinance came before this commission, it was a green building ordinance that would have directed development to implement energy efficiency and green building practices, and that ordinance was put on hold and never brought up again. So, I would hope that we would take another look at that ordinance. It's been five and a half years, and technology has changed greatly, the market has changed tremendously, building practices have changed tremendously, other communities are embracing these things. Atlanta got named the top better building participant this past year, they're the top city in the nation for green building right now, and that's right down the road. If they can do it, we can do it, too. So, I hope that by, you know, moving forward with this resolution, we will actually put into practice the intentions of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Yeah, I want to thank you for putting this together and getting it on the agenda, and I would like to make a motion that we accept the renewable energy resolution.
Motion, second. Did you have some discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I work in this industry a fair amount, and I will tell you that you need to be careful about what you ask for, because when you burn biosolids, what you do is you create a concentrated mass of heavy metals that then have to be disposed of in a hazardous waste landfill, which we don't have. So, you create another problem. So, you know, you think there's a solution, there's also a problem. So, those kind of things will have to be vetted before we move down that line as well, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. If we burn them, we have heavy metals, if we don't burn them, we have heavy metals, and they end up in the landfill. So, I don't see the point, sorry.
Okay, all in favor of the vote of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, guys. And I think this is much more than lip service, I think this establishes values of our community when we adopt these resolutions. And so, we will now go to our public input on, we have one, we have one Planning Commission item, and it's item number 11, which is a request from, to amend the CE Commercial Office Plan Development on 5.4046 acres known as 775 Sunset Drive, and proposed use as a hospital expansion. Does anyone wish to speak to that item in the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and this is in Mr. Bailey's district. Do you want to speak to it, Mr. Bailey?
Well, I'd like to say that I think that this is a project that will have some benefit to our community, and that with the conditions that we've asked the, this medical facility to abide by, I think that it's a quality project that I don't see any problems with and would like to see the rest of the commission approve.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I move that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor. Oh, read the ordinance, Mr. Bearman, thank you.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the existing plan development zone COPD Commercial Office Plan Development on the approximate 5.046 acre tract of land at 775 Sunset Drive and for other purposes.
Okay, and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed. And I'm going to go out of order just a little bit, we've got an item number 12 that, on the agenda, it says, says an input on any item, but we're going to act on item number 12 first, which is the confirmation of our manager, Dwayne, of our permanent manager, Mr. Blaine Williams. So, I recommend that the Mayor and Commission take the following action: Confirm the appointment of Blaine H. Williams as manager effective as of today to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of the manager, expiring June 30th, 2017. Adopt an amendment to the FY 2016 budget ordinance to set the compensation of the manager effective as of today, and authorize the mayor to execute an employment contract with Mr. Williams at the salary authorized in the FY 2016 budget ordinance as amended hereby. I'd entertain a motion from somebody?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Bearman, please do.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to charter officer compensation and for other purposes.
We have, yes, sir.
Blaine, you sure you want to do this?
This is your last chance. Let's vote before he changes his mind. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Manager Williams, you're now our manager for at least a year. So, would you like to speak to us tonight before we move forward?
That's heartening. Well, from the time that I arrived here, a little over three years ago, the citizens of Athens Clark County have been incredibly supportive to me and my wife, Joanie, and my sons, James, Sam, and Jack, who are here with us tonight. Many of those folks have graciously helped to assimilate us into this community, which is our home, and I'm honored in your confidence in me, and I want to thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity. You know, 25 years ago, when the unified government was designed, there was a lot of thought that went into it, and it's very well structured. And that's something that's not lost to me, because I have worked in other governments, and I believe that this government represents a true value to its citizens. Our employees are our most valuable resource in the provision of services, and I'm looking forward to working alongside them to meet the expectations of both you and our citizens. It is up to us to help reach out into the community, to build relationships and trust, and assure each citizen that this government is here to serve them. And I believe that this is a time in the history of this community that there is much promise and much opportunity. We have built some rich collaborations of late with some of our community partners, and we are working together to tackle some complex community issues. I also believe that we need to develop a collective vision with our partners and the citizens of this community so that we can constantly manage change and arrive at a future Athens of our choosing. I can think of no other work I'd rather be doing, and I can think of no other community I'd rather be doing it in. I want to thank you again for this wonderful privilege and opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. This is probably one of the most important acts that I will do in the nomination of our manager for Clark County, and I'm very proud of the job that I did, along with the advice of some of our commissioners, so, welcome aboard. And we will now go to our citizen input on any item that was not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tyler Dewey, 149 Tracy Street. Bike Athens has frequently talked about our belief that strengthening the complete streets policy to include resurfacing projects would benefit the community. Tonight, I really am just referencing that tangentially because I just want to note and raise awareness that the Federal Highway Administration, just this past month, so only a few weeks ago, released a new guide called Incorporating On-Road Bicycle Networks Into Resurfacing Projects. So, it's a best practices guide and advice manual to do just that, incorporate on-road bicycle networks into resurfacing projects. And I know recently Athens Clark County's had some success in doing that with the Riverbend Parkway. While Dougherty Street wasn't a resurfacing project, we had a restriping over there. You know, we did it on Baxter Street, perhaps not as well as everyone would have liked, and then we may do it recently again with Chase Street in the next months. So, it's just another resource for our managers, and combined with last autumn's release, again, from the federal highways of the Separated Bike Lane Planning and Design Guide, there are increasing amount of references for engineers to use to find and implement low-cost, high-value opportunities to expand and connect the bike network. So, again, I just wanted to raise awareness of those documents and resources for our staff and the Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lily Slaughter, and we are also packing, passing out some packets for y'all as well for what we're going to present. I live at 1,000 Lakeside Drive, and me, as well as my classmates sitting with us today, are representing Sherry Laboon's Communication Class for the University of North Georgia. And we did a semester project that we came to share with you today about a community issue that we find very important. We did research as well as have personal testimonies with this issue that we decided to do our project on, and it's the conditions of the Memorial Dog Park in Athens Clark County. So, the conditions that we found were an issue, were the lack of doggy bag stations, the lack of cosmetics like the grass and the scenery at the park, as well as the water drainage conditions. So, we found that the citizens, including students that we talked to and community members, found they were unsatisfactory, and we were looking to see some implementations and make changes with that.
I am going to be talking to y'all about the solutions, and this will be on page eight and nine within the packets that we have made. And this will be on page eight and nine within the packets that we have made. And one of... Due to our research, some of the most important solutions that we have found plausible, as well as budgetary, are including a five-foot tall fence around the perimeter, as well as potentially a five-foot fence in between the park in order to separate dog size from small and big, as well as the water. We understand, we've spoken to the maintenance department, we understand it's up to code. However, we have had testimonies from people saying that the dogs have gotten sick due to the lack of drainage from the watering stations. So we understand it's up to code, but I think that we would like to maybe look at that code and reassess what that standard is, because we don't think that it is efficient and up to code as much as we think it should be. So hopefully, y'all can see the importance in these issues as well. We have looked in other communities. They have accomplished it through fundraisers. So if y'all will take into consideration what we have proposed to y'all, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, guys. I look forward to reading your report. Anyone else?
Hi, Russell Edwards, 400 Duncan Springs. My son and I were playing in the front yard the other day. Duncan Springs runs along the border, and we noticed that the spring was completely white. There was some sort of pollutant in the spring. And so I posted a picture on Facebook and tagged our environmental coordinator, Andrew Saunders. And he showed up within 20 minutes with his toddler in the back of his car and got a flashlight out and searched the storm drains. Shortly thereafter, the interim stormwater coordinator, Anna Trzynski, showed up with her dinner date. They had interrupted their dinner date. So they came down there and got out the flashlight. This was Friday at 5:00 p.m. when this happened. They found the person that had been cleaning their paintbrushes in the stormwater drain. And it wasn't in Duncan Springs. It was actually in Princeton Mill, the next neighborhood over. So they had tracked the storm drain all the way across the street and into the next development, found the perpetrator, and issued a citation. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission, how impressed I was by the professionalism and the worksmanship of our staff. I was really proud of my community when I saw them spring to action so quickly on a Friday at 5:00 p.m. And I'm hoping that we can maybe find out what happened with the grout that went into the sewer on Broad Street with the same efficiency that we found out who washed out their paintbrush in Princeton Mill, because I know that that came at a great expense to our community. It made me very upset. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will have to say that what you just related us is the rule of employees in Clark County, not the exception, although I really appreciate those two folks and what they did. Thank you, Russell. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to come back behind the rail. And it's time that we have our reports. And the mayor's has the first report. And I have a reappointment to the Housing Authority from the City of Athens. And Valdon R. Daniel will be reappointed to a five-year term, expiring May 31st, 2021. And Sonya Fears will be the resident member, and those are one-year terms that will expire May 31st of 2017. And we have... We just got some compliments on employees. And we have employees so often in Athens, Clark County, that win awards, small and large. And some of them, they get big awards for departments, and we bring them up to the front and do photos. But we have individuals that get recognition, too. And I don't know whether Michelle Cash is here or not. Is Michelle here? I was going to get her at least stand up so we could say congratulations, but she was recognized by the National Association for Interpretation as an outstanding interpreter for Region 3, which includes the southeastern United States and Puerto Rico. So congratulations, Michelle. We also have... I want to give congratulations to one of our own up here behind the rail. Jared Bailey has completed all the courses required for certification as a certified county commissioner. And I think we have two among us now. Ms. Wright and Mr. Bailey. Congratulations. Congratulations again to you, Ms. Wright. That's a lot of work. And I have something I'd like to refer to our Legislative Committee. And Mr. Harrod, I believe, heads that up. He's not here tonight, but we'll make sure he knows. Oh, that's your committee. Okay, Gert. Okay. So take note of this, Kelly. And this would be... The request came from Andy. A review of the animal control ordinance with reference to fencing. And this relates to the invisible fencing, electronic fencing. So we want to look at that animal control ordinance for that reason. And that's all I have tonight. Do we have anything for you, Ms. Manager Williams? No longer acting manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Bearman?
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Maddox?
Ms. Blaine?
And now we will hear from our commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Wright, and go clockwise around the room and end up with Commissioner Bailey.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. And I did add on my list, I really appreciate this. Memorial Park is in my district. So I really appreciate y'all's work. I would like one of you to contact me by email, maybe so that I can have some dialogue with you guys. The website has it, District 4. So if you go to the commissioners, this kind of stuff is very important to me and us. So I want to have some back and forth, which we can't do here. So contact me for that. I want to... If there's anybody out there that's associated with the rodeo, there's a lot of rodeo promotional signs on College Station Road. It's time to round them up and put them away. And then it's time for everybody to do spring cleaning. So it's also time where Keep Athens, Clark County Beautiful is preparing for its May... It's called Trash to Treasure. So you're looking at something you haven't used in two years. It's trash to you, but it's somebody else's treasure. If you'll make contact, again, by the website, you can get in touch with Keep Athens, Clark County Beautiful about where to load up your vehicle and bring things that can get a new home with somebody else with their May event. And that's all I have.
I want to, first of all, thank Tyler Dewey for bringing up those resources for bike lanes and pedestrian and bike safety. I've come across them in the past couple of weeks, and I think they're important resources that I hope we can refer to regularly. And on that note, I also want to point out that recently, the Government Operations Committee looked at traffic calming... Neighborhood traffic calming ordinance or program. And we came up with some tweaks to it that will help a few streets, but actually, they're not going to help the streets that I hear the most about. And I'm asking the mayor if she could please assign some additional measures to the Government Operations Committee. Perhaps we can take a closer look at that ordinance to, you know, look at some of the in-town streets that are being impacted by cut-through traffic. And these are narrow streets where the houses are very close to the curb. So a car might not be going... A car might not be going 38 miles an hour, but a car going 30 miles an hour has a very extreme impact on a street where the houses are very close to the curb and very close together. We're seeing a lot more development on our commercial corridors. I'm talking about West Broad Street and Prince Avenue. Hawthorne Avenue, too, I'm concerned about. And these are the streets like Evans Street and Linden Avenue, Grady Avenue, that are getting a lot of this cut-through traffic. North Chase Street. But they don't meet those criteria, and they're not even going to meet the criteria even after we tweak it. So, you know, we could look at things like four-way stop signs, school zones, other means for implementing speed bumps. You know, crosswalks can do a lot to slow traffic down just because of the visual impairment. So I hope that the Government Operations Committee can have a broader assignment to get a little more creative on traffic calming measures in our neighborhoods. And we also expanded the residential parking program, and that's another concern I have. I've had several streets in my district that have requested to be added to that program. Buena Vista, Grady, the Church and Meigs area. We're seeing, especially since the development of the Health Sciences Campus, we're seeing a lot of impact and people parking on streets. Especially Buena Vista, where you've got students parking on Buena Vista and dashing across Prince Avenue where there's no crosswalk. So I would ask that we could look at some more streets to add to that program. Thank you.
Ms. Gert?
Madam Mayor, just a couple of days ago, a citizen alerted me to an area of some stormwater concern. It's adjacent to our Public Utilities Campus, off Barber Street. Longtime folks know that there's a now dormant rail line adjacent to there. And there's a creek, Linden Creek, that runs under the rail line. There's a trestle. I visited the site just a couple of days ago, and there's such significant erosion that the trestle really is being undercut, perhaps compromising the integrity of that line. So if stormwater staff could take a look at that. I've got some photographs I can send. That's all tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I have nothing.
I had a couple of things. First of all, congratulations, Blaine. Look forward to working with you on the commission. The World Wonder Park, I just wanted to say, I appreciated all the input that we did receive from the citizens. It is a feature of my district and something that you'll see kids out... I've already seen kids out for the last three or four weeks when we met with the manager and his staff. We about got trampled by kids, including his own, I think. I also want to mention, I participated in the March for Meals with Athens Community Council on Aging. It's a really great opportunity if you've never done it. I did it last year. My mom used to do it a lot. And Ms. Newland, who is a family friend of mine, has done it for many, many, many years. I think she's like the foundation of that organization. And I met with a gentleman who used to live in my district, Carl Glickman. He was my... I rode along with him, really fun guy. But I think what's... What really became apparent was how many people really only see these people every day. I mean, they don't see anybody else but these people delivering the meals. So it's really important that this program continue. And I'm really glad that we have a group in Athens that does that. And then I also would like to tip my hat to our Public Utilities Crew for dealing with that mess on Broad Street with the concrete that got dumped in the sewer line. That is just a big mess, and I hope we do find out who did that. That's all. Thank you.
Before we go on to the next... To Ms. Bell, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty and do a shout-out to a group that I am so sorry I didn't do it when I was giving my report. They're Athens... Athens Church of Christ here in Athens. I'm sorry, the minister's name is escaping me. But for three years, they have done what they call the Mayor's Day of Service. And I have to tell you the story about how this happened, because to me, it's quite amazing and very indicative of what people do in Athens, Clark County. But I had an appointment for minister and associate minister and their wives to come in and talk with me. We came in, we sat around the table for a few minutes and got to know each other. And I said, "What can I do for you?" And the minister said, "Mayor Denson, we have $5,000 and 150 people. What can we do for you?" And they wanted a project. And they... And this was an outgrowth of the mayor's call to service that I did several years ago. So they met on a Saturday morning. I gave them a send-off. They all had t-shirts on alike. And they went out, and they... And this, what you said, Sharon, reminded me of it. And I did that Meals on Wheels group drive, too, this year. But they took potted flowers and a visit to every shut-in on the list of the Council on Aging. They did repair and improvement projects at the Council on Aging, the Food Bank, and the homeless shelter. They came back and did it a second year. And last Saturday... Saturday before Easter, they did their third annual... And they're going to make it an annual event. And they literally have just a sea of people. For those of you who are my friends on Facebook, you can see some photos of those people on my Facebook. But to me, that is just... That's what Athens, State of Georgia and United States is all about. So my hat's off to those people. And thank you for your service to our community. Ms. Bell?
Last night, the Federated Neighborhood Group had a panel. First was the school district, people that were running for the positions. The second part was our commissioners that are running for their seats this year with no opposition, and they did a wonderful job. I didn't stay for the whole team, because I wanted... The whole night, I wanted to go home and watch a basketball game, which I didn't win. But I wanted to comment. We have a new manager now that has his children in our public schools. And it was wonderful last night to watch the people that are running for the positions on the school board. And to have someone with us in our government that's representing part of that means a lot to me. And to hear what those people said last night and what they want to do to make a difference with our school district, and I was very proud, very, very, very proud to hear. It was a good hour, hour and 15 minutes of conversation with questions and interaction. I was very proud. And I'm proud that you've got those three boys back there that's going to be in our public schools. And welcome aboard.
Ms. Hamby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it was a good Federation meeting. And I would have... I will have to say that I thought I did better than anybody on the panel.
Of course you did.
That's just me.
You're going to win.
So I would like to congratulate Blaine on... Blaine Williams on the new manager's position. I will have to say, though, that I'm already missing manager reddish. And I'm just joking. For what it's worth, I also miss Ed Robinson. So... But the... I'm just joking, too, Jerry. The... I do want to say a couple of serious things, though. Last night, we did have an infill meeting about some issues related to some infill development that's going on. I look forward to, as that discussion progresses. But the thing I want to point out is last night, at this meeting, Bruce Lonnie, who works for our Planning Department, did a really good job. There were about 150 people there. And Bruce took the time and was very patient to answer people's questions and gave a really good presentation and helped explain things a lot better so that people could understand and know what the issues are that are facing us and help us make a decision in that regard. So I thought that was very good. I feel like there was something else, but I'm like, the mayor is slipping my mind now.
We may have to come back to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Nispel?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Transportation and Public Works, and specifically David Clark for... We've had this issue with a home that's been affected by errant stormwater, not knowing where it's coming from. It's coming as groundwater and surface water. And it's been going on for a long time. And David put some resources on this. And just today, I got an email from him just saying, "I found it." He found where it's coming from, and they're going to try to fix it. And it is coming from Mitchell Bridge Road. So I'm really, really proud of them for getting on this. I'll echo what Commissioner Hamby said about the infill housing meeting last night. Bruce Lonnie did a fabulous job explaining a very difficult-to-explain subject. And I thought I did at least as well as you at the candidate's forum.
Okay.
I'll say that you did. I also want to, Madam Mayor.
You're not going to win.
No, no. Ed's going to win. I want to say that there's a couple of items, one of which is, we've asked for a text amendment regarding some of our land use things regarding front yard driveways on our commercial corridors. There's a tiny sensitivity to this. I haven't, I don't know where it is in the process. We need to get it out there.
We need to get the report back.
And we also have a new one that I want to bring to your attention, and see if we can get to that, and that is having to do with how large, how much business can increase its footprint before it has to comply with all of our ordinances. Right now, it can only increase it by 10% before it has to comply with street, stormwater, lights, and all the other things. It can no longer be grandfathered. That's having an effect on at least one big, major business I know of along the West Athens Business Corridor, where they want to expand less than 25%. But if they increase by 10%, it's just not feasible, and they will not be able to hire the two new employees that they could if they could expand their operation by just, just over 10%. So, I think it's reasonable for us to look at expanding the allowance we give for expanding an existing business. And so, I would like for you to consider asking for planning staff to look at a text amendment to address that as well.
Will you write that up for me?
I will, I will indeed. I'm sorry for surprising you about it.
No, no, it's not a surprise. It sounds like something needs to be looked at, and I don't know whether we have, that can be done as a, through the appeals process for...
Well, no, we really need it.
It's not qualified.
We really need it to change our ordinance so that our existing businesses are encouraged to expand, because the economics of it are, they can't expand over 10%. So, they either don't expand, or they find a different location. So, it's pretty important, in general.
It's something that's important to look at. I'm not sure what we need to do, but we look at it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And you remembered what you wanted to say, Mike.
Thank you for indulging me. Just for a minute, it is a question I had for Manager Williams. And I spoke to you earlier today on the phone about this, about the bike master plan. And it's my understanding that this can be paid for out of this, out of the current spliced funds. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And is it correct to assume that once this bike master plan, which is, I believe, one of our top priorities for this next fiscal year, it will happen during this next fiscal year, and that we will perhaps engage some sort of outside consultant to help us figure that out?
That's absolutely correct. The mayor and I have already been discussing about a proposed process for that that might mirror the same process that involved Citizen Input and Steering Committee back in 2003.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
And since I've indulged somebody much younger than me, I'd like to thank Pastor Sonny Sessions and his church. So, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, would like to congratulate Blaine Williams, and I think that we've made a very good choice. And I appreciate what he's done so far and look forward to what he'll do for us in the future. And I also would like to congratulate David Clark on his advancement, I guess it is. But we'll miss him. He's done an incredible job for us. But I have something else I'd like to talk about. Some of you here behind the rail may be familiar with this. I've been contacted by a local businessperson about an existing state law that we may have an opportunity to, to look at locally here. Recently, the Georgia Department of Revenue Commissioner announced that she interprets the existing state alcohol statutes as allowing growler sales in brew pubs, and that the Department of Revenue would defer to local governments to decide if they want to allow these sales in their own communities. Soon after she made that announcement, an ordinance was passed in Savannah, allowing brew pub growler sales, and the local brew pub there in downtown Savannah, Moon River, was the first Georgia brew pub to sell growlers. Following Savannah's lead, Alpharetta passed a similar ordinance just in the past few weeks, and other municipalities are expected to follow suit. According to the Georgia Craft Brewers Guild, they've been saying that this has been legal all along, but it was up to the Department of Revenue Commissioner to sign off on it, and apparently, she has. So, the Georgia Department of Revenue has always considered growers on sale, on-premise sales, since the package, a keg, is opened in order for a growler to be filled. And although brew pubs, which are essentially restaurants and breweries combined, are forbidden by their brew pub licenses to make direct off-premises sales, sales, though they can sell their beers to retailers, to a wholesaler, they still have on-premise licenses for beer to sell in their establishments. So, since the DOR has declared that they're not interested in regulating growlers and depend on each municipality's decision, I'd like to ask, Madam Mayor, that you refer this matter to the Legislative Review Committee to see if this might be something that we want to pursue. It certainly would be something that would assist local business or businesses. And as you know, we have a growing brewing business collection of businesses here, industry. And I think we should do what we can to help those entrepreneurs. And I appreciate your consideration in that matter. With that said, I move that we adjourn.
You don't want to adjourn yet.
We don't? Okay.
I've always wanted to do this. It is done. It's referred to the Legislative Review Committee. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Good, good.
So, now, we can have a motion for adjournment.
So, I do move. Does it need a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. And don't forget that Mr. Williams wants to have a photo taken with everybody before you leave. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed?